Study session to order. Mayor Pankinen will not be here and Commissioner Waddell will not be present tonight. I'm acting mayor, filling in for Mayor Pankinen. On tonight's agenda, item two, at the commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular session agenda of July the 2nd, 2019. Does anyone have any discussions or concerns?
I just wanted to ask about those under consent items. There was a mowing thing and I would just kind of want to cover that just a little bit more.
Yes, I think that's mowing for the entryways.
Is that what it is?
Is that right, Everett? Do you want to explain to the commission what we're doing there?
Yes.
You want to go ahead and stand up? Come on up to the microphone, you're on TV.
It's the four entryways into the city coming on all four highways. We contract those out every year to help us keep up the mowing. This year, we extended to North Highway to help sell a little more. We took on some more jobs that we're doing, so we brought it all with the popper. That's the only change we've made, so other than that, the same thing we've been doing for the last few years.
Yeah, I don't know if that answers your question. We started that effort several years ago to help basically contract out some of the services so that our street department could focus more on the streets and not just mowing in some of the time. So that's the intent of the effort.
And so there's three companies that are going to be doing it, or are we going to select one of them?
Right, no, we bid them all out separately because there's no way one company can keep up with all four and keep it the way we want it maintained. So we let everybody bid on it. The most it's ever been was one company had three of them, and that got a little out of hand, so I think this year, two, one company's got two of them and then it's split on the other, so it's a lot easier to keep up with that way.
We've done contract mowing in the past in all different kinds of ways, and so I just was wondering about that. So great, that answers my question. Thank you very much.
I've got two questions. On the agenda, on page 147, where it talks about the agreement for bond council services, just, I think I fully understand that, but could someone, is that just the group of people that are helping us with securing the bonding and financing? That's what that is, right? It's just an agreement with them?
Yes, the city has a long-term arrangement, not arrangement, a long-term relationship with Public Law Finance Group or Bond Council for any kind of refinancing or new debt issue like the Call Lake financings. And we also use Municipal Finance Services as our financial advisor, and these are, we've used those two companies probably at least since the 90s and maybe, we might have been using them when you guys were on last time.
We used them in the late 80s, didn't we?
Yes, so it's a long-term relationship. They provide expertise with their knowledge on financing, refinancing. Rick Smith, who started Municipal Finance, had worked for the Water Board, so it's very, very helpful. And those guys will actually be here around 6:00 tonight, so if we're still going to study session, I'd be glad for them to introduce themselves and maybe help answer any questions you have. And upstairs, of course, they'll do a presentation on the refinancings, and it's actually one of the wastewater dams beneficial for us for really a couple of reasons, but they'll be here to carry the water instead of delivering on that.
I thought that's what that was, I just wanted to make sure. Then my other question, in one of the, I think it's the consent items, where it talks about the pressure relief line that's going to be put in, what is that exactly for? That's between Coke and our plant, right? And what does that pressure relief valve do? Does that lower the pressure down to Coke?
What it does is, we've had some, I won't say frequent line breaks, but we've had several line breaks since that line's been put in new, oh, several years ago. And so we've determined that probably is a preventative measure to water hammering that's going on with Coke as they adjust their processes and using potable or non-potable water. We determined that a water pressure relief valve is the best way to handle that. I believe it's up in the middle of the field. I don't know if Lou's here. Yeah, Lou, you want to explain it?
We've had several breaks on our 20-inch water line that goes out to Coke, sir, and to prevent us from having to go out there and dig up the pastures and taking care of our 20-inch water line. I asked engineer if they would put together a proposal or a plan, and they helped us out. And basically what happens is if the pressure gets too high, if it's going to get high enough to blow a pipe, it'll blow off on that pressure relief at that time. It won't, it'll keep it from, it'll prevent it from blowing off the pipe. It's not going to reduce the pressure, it's not going to diminish the pressure in any way, shape, or form. If the pressure spikes or gets to a high level, instead of breaking the pipe, it's going to, it's going to release the pressure.
Okay. What's the pipe made out of?
PVC, plastic.
So it's that greenish?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, 20-inch.
That's pretty big, isn't it? How is that?
It's about that big. The last time we had one that blew off, it actually moved the 20-inch line six inches to the left.
Underground?
Underground. And that's why we asked for that pressure relief.
Okay. Thank you.
Any others, further discussions? Item three on the agenda, update on wayfinding signage from Lisa Powell. Gerald?
I think Lisa will give this, and Michael, would you stand up for a minute, too? I don't know if the commission's met you yet or not. You're the new supervisor in technical services?
Yes, sir.
Michael worked for a long time for UniFirst, and like 20 plus years, and then he most recently worked for Mickey Stowers out at Aircraft Structures, and I believe we've been fortunate enough to get him as a supervisor here at the city. So he is in charge of the department that does wayfinding signage and street painting. Has anybody noticed street painting?
Yes.
There's a lot of it going on, it looks great. Even paint on an old street makes the street look better, so that's his department, his people doing that. We appreciate the efforts of those city employees. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners and Gerald, City Manager. Appreciate the opportunity to update everybody on the wayfinding signage initiative. Looking back at our records, it's been two years, I think, since we've been here to give you an update. And so we were recently meeting Michael and bringing his team up to speed with what we've, what we are doing or hope to do in the way of installing some new signs and then learning what's happening in the process so far. So anyway, it's just a good time to get back and update everybody. And since we have so many new commissioners, I'm going to spend a little time on the history. And, let me see, I've got the clicker here, don't I? There we go. This all originated out of our Enid First meetings, and so these are the groups that are involved in Enid First. The group mainly focuses around marketing Enid and ways to improve the community for attraction of visitors and business. And in 2016, we hired Corbin Design, who is one of the leading sign design companies in the country. This is not Corbin Design here in Enid, they are out of Michigan. And so you can see some examples of the work they've done here in the region on signage. This is obviously for municipalities, but they also do signage for hospitals and other large complexes. The reasons that we believe that wayfinding signage is something necessary for Enid is, you know, our ultimate goal is to increase sales tax revenue. And I think a lot of our gems in retail and venues for people to go visit may be a little hidden to the visitor as they drive through on the main highways. We've got two large highways that efficiently transport people through Enid, and so we want to find ways to draw their attention to things and places they can go and do outside of those highways. And so increasing the traffic to our retail and cultural venues, improving the visitor experience, I'm sure everybody can think of those communities that you've been to or been through on vacation, and they do have really nice signage, and it always just makes your stay a little more convenient, a little easier. We also think it will do a lot to speak to citizens because it does tie in with all of the branding that we've done for the community, and so it is kind of a marketing stamp, postcard out there on the streets and raising awareness again with our local citizens of all the things that Enid has available to do. Creates a sense of place. And then another portion of this project is bullet number two there, which is it is also removing an outdated signage that is no longer needed or dilapidated, faded, all those types of things. We have done this project in coordination with the Department of Transportation because we do have two large highways that go through Enid, and they are, they've been very supportive. They have taken a look at our plans that have been developed because they can use it as a model for other places that do this kind of work in the state. But they've also helped coordinate the location of a lot of these signs and agreed to help if any, if we identify any of their signage that needs to be replaced or repaired, they've been available to do that as a part of it. When Corbin was in town, helping us to identify the locations where we need signage, these are some of the partners that were involved in the surveys and interviews that happened. Here's some of the inspiration they used for designing the signs, so you can see some of the architectural features throughout the community that are represented in some of the signage we've developed. Derwin has a copy of our design guidelines there that he's flipping through, so you can pass that around if you guys want to take an up-close look at any of that. Just make sure I get it back because that is my working copy, it has my name on it, so. So here, obviously the gateway signs, we got placed a number of years ago, but it does tie in to all the other signage throughout town. That large sign there that says it's a vehicular guide, that is the largest sign, and those are the ones that you'll see on state highways 412 and 81. At the top of that sign is a red district sign that says District Downtown. We've identified the community and broken it into at least three districts at this time. I think we've added a fourth that's not represented here on this slide, but we have downtown, we have the West Gharriett District, and we have the Varsity District. I only have the Northwest District, that is the other one that would include properties north of Chestnut on Cleveland and Cleveland and Willow. So, anyway, each one of those districts is a different color, and so when you have then a sign within that district, that sign will also have that same color represented. This helps in providing directions to people on a map so that you can tell them that general area we are within the downtown district, or you need to go out towards the West Gharriett District. And then there at the end, those are pedestrian kiosks, and you may have seen some of those that we have been able to install downtown. Here's the full sign type array. Some of these we may not necessarily use. The fourth one over there is an opportunity to highlight any prominent members from Enid that we want to brag about and give homage to, and we don't have that one in place yet. And then these on the bottom row, those are your smaller signs that are going to be in your, on your city streets that are outside of the highway area. Includes parking signs, park signs, all of the above. Those that are just floating with no pole, those are ones that could be attached to an existing pole and wouldn't require a pole. Any case, so where we stand right now, total signs in the plan is about 100 signs. Today, so far, we have installed four of our entryway signs, six wayfinding signs, which are the large ones, both on the highway, and then there's a couple downtown along Grand that have been installed, and three pedestrian kiosks downtown. We are waiting on right-of-way for two signs at the corner of Highway 81 and 412, and we have 13 parking lot signs that are in process, and those will go around the parking lots near the Stride Bank Center. It will provide a name for each of those parking lots and identify them as public parking, and so those should be going up very soon as well. Mike's here to answer any questions. I know he's new on the job, but he's getting up to speed quickly. I think in talking with Mike and Gerald, this year we may be using some more local vendors to assist in the fabrication. Up till now, we've used really a lot of talent that the city sign shop has had in the way of the ability to paint and weld and cut, but that kind of talent comes and goes, and so we're going to look to fill in for some of that with some of the local vendors. We've been using an annual budget of about $50,000 a year. That $1,500 a sign is a non-scientific guess of what the cost is on average per sign. Obviously, your very large ones cost a bit more, and your smaller ones are obviously less. And we have also removed 18 signs similar to the one you'll see out there, says DHS Northern Oklahoma Resource Center, which is no longer there, so. Our next steps are, the signs that we have, I believe they're already made, are those two that are waiting for right-of-way, so those will go up when that's available, the parking signs I mentioned around the Stride Bank Center, and then we will get together as a team with the city to identify what is the next phase of signage that we want to get installed, which I think our primary objective is to do the highways first and then downtown as a second priority, and then also identify, continue to identify any signs that are outdated and may need to be taken down. And with that, I will answer any questions, if you have any.
Well, I for one think that signs are great. They're real modern, they're easy to read, they're placed well. We had way too many signs doing, just confusing, it just looked bad. And I'm glad we're addressing this, so it looks like you've put a lot of thought and consideration into it, it looks like they will last a long time. Everything about it is very hip, in my opinion.
Yes, and it's interesting, I've learned way more about signage than I ever knew there was to know, but the style and size of the font, the color of the font, the color of the paint for the background, the size of the sign, the number of items you put on the sign, all of that is a science that this group, Corbin Design, you know, has figured out, and they know how to do it well, and so I've been, we've been very pleased.
Good job.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. Item four, discuss C3 zoning ordinance. I believe that's going to be. Carol?
Yes, last time we touched briefly about providing R7 uses in C3. We touched about it a little bit, and I've come up with two different ideas. We don't have to do anything, but if it would be a good idea, generally C3 accumulates the uses that are less intense. So one of them just puts in R7 residential multifamily district uses within C3. The other one, there was discussion about, well, what about unintended consequences or particular locations that wouldn't be good for R7? So we, I put in R7 residential multifamily district uses as a possible used by review. There already is a section that talks about any other similar business or service would be a used by review, but this would expressly indicate that if you wanted to put an R7 use in C3, you could go to the planning commission and ask them to review it and approve it.
C3's always kind of been the most catch-all permissive.
Exactly.
I think it was, if it was an oversight or an error that R7 wasn't already just included in it by default. Seems like this is not something we want to be trying to do as used by review.
One thing that was mentioned last time, that was brought up by, I think, Commissioner Mason, which is a good point, is we want to take some extra time to make sure we're not going to have unintended consequences. If we do allow this in C3, that means anywhere in C3, the other side, they want to do something that's allowed under R7, they could do, which may be, if that's the intent of the commission, would be clear to staff. But Carol's also offered another option with the used by review to allow it to be clear. We want to know what you guys want to do.
Yeah, C3 already allows all this other stuff. I don't think there's anything in R7 that, I just don't think it's that big a deal. What was the concern?
One of my concerns was that, apparently that's the one that allows apartments, right? And that if we allow apartments to be put in any C3, that gives us any, it takes away any option that we have to actually review that if we want to. However, but the underlying line reason that I probably have a little bit of issue with this is I feel like we're making this change just for one entity.
This feels, I don't feel like we're making this for one entity, it feels like this is something that came to our attention that we should have fixed at some point before. And I don't, I mean, I just don't, I'm not sure what's objectionable about a apartment. We, our comp plan indicates that we want higher density residential, that we want more mixed use, that all our long-term planning indicates that higher density residential and mixed use is what, is what we're seeking out, so why would we put a barrier in front of that?
Because I think that with Hope Outreach wanting to put that boarding house down there, which I'm not opposed to, but I think that when we do that, it's going to take the option of every property owner that lives around there, their option away from, away from them to come in and say, hey, I have an issue with this, or I want to know more about this, or I want to have a voice in it.
Yeah, but I'm not sure that a boarding house, I mean, if already C3 allows pool halls, bars, banks, business schools, car washes, discount stores, florists, furniture stores, grocery stores, kennel, that, an apartment or boarding house, and it's also the, I don't know, I guess I'm reluctant to, you know, if you own your piece of property and it's already zoned C3, it would be one thing if we were allowing big apartments in R2 or something like that, but C3 is already C3, I mean, it's...
Yeah, no, I understand that, but I know that when we did Jeremiah's deal, that caused a lot of problems. A lot of people had a voice on that, and still have a voice on that. And I just feel like by just including that in C3, we're now going, okay, we're going to take all that voice away from them because it's already zoned.
Well, only if it's in, only if it's owned C3. I mean, C3 is not like, it's a, is a high bar to get to.
I do, I understand that. But where they're talking about, there are other residential properties around there.
But we want mixed use, mixed use is good.
I understand that.
Mostly apartments. I mean, really close, I mean, just...
I understand. I'm thinking about the next one that comes up, Carol, that won't be right there.
That's why I listened to you, and I said, if that's the issue, used by review gives a opportunity to look, but it doesn't require as, it does not require as much of an expenditure of money for the process. You post the property, it provides notice to the, to the people that live nearby, but you don't have to do the 300-foot list, and it isn't a downzoning.
So what determines then how many of the property owners get notified on a used by review?
Used by review, you put up a sign. So they drive by, and, but we also have it on the agenda and stuff. This isn't, I was surprised myself that R7 uses were not allowed in C3, particularly with allowing in C3 group homes of 20 or more. The other thing is that, I don't know why, if, we've got big houses in C3 that have limited use if we don't allow them to be, I mean, this, this big house, we, the person that owns it either has to tear it down or find an unusual family.
I'm not arguing with any of that. I completely agree with you. I'd like to see every one of them used, but I feel like we're trying to, this looks like to me, or feels like to me, a workaround so they don't have to come in, we don't run into the same thing that we did with Jeremiah's project. That's what it feels like to me. And all I'm saying is, I'm for that facility. I think those are amazing, I think the work they do is great, but I just feel like we're going out there and we're throwing another thing into specific zoning category that's going to take that option from those property owners, and that's where I kind of have an issue.
Certainly, if you think that we shouldn't have R7 in C3, and if you think that the only way to allow for R7, you know, if, if the, we do used by review because we're thinking it is compatible, but we need to make sure that the particular circumstances warrant it, and it goes to the MAPC and it can be appealed to the mayor and board of commissioners. If that's not, you know, if you definitely don't want R7 in C3, then we shouldn't pass an ordinance, but used by review seems to be a good middle ground that wouldn't require people to downzone property that already is zoned C3.
So used by review, then they would be able to come in, put up a sign, and anybody around there would be able to come in and voice an opinion then?
Absolutely. And, and actually, we put the sign up, I believe. I believe we put it up, don't we?
Right, right.
Yes, okay.
But why do they only get that for a boarding house? If I, if I have that house and I call it a hotel, I don't need anything, because hotels and motels are allowed in C3. It's just, I don't think, I, I don't agree with your characterization. I think this is a thing arose and we, it came to Carol's attention that we have a fluke, an error in our zoning, a, and, oh, this isn't on just its own, apropos of the specific instance that gave rise to noticing the error, that just, it doesn't make sense on its own. And that if it doesn't make sense on its own, and there's also, I think, some, you have to do some balancing. Not everybody gets a say in what their neighbors do in their property, and we have the lowest say on what neighbors have on their, what you, you know, what your neighbor could do with their property when it's zoned C3. If I've got C3, if I've got C3 zoning, and that's, keep in mind, that is just what we're talking about. We are only talking about C3. And so I feel like we should have a very low ability for an annoyed neighbor to tell me what I can't do on my property in a C3 zoning, because that's what C3 is for. I can have a movie theater, I can have a hotel, and if I call my boarding house a motel, a really small motel, then the neighbor can't do anything about it anyway.
Yes, I understand that, Ben, but there's a big difference in that and what they're wanting to use it for. Big difference.
But we're not looking at what they're wanting to use it for, we are looking at an ordinance change.
But that's what this has all come about, this is how this all come about was because of that, though.
Well, but sometimes we also see things in our ordinances because someone brings it to our attention that should be corrected on their own basis.
Okay.
Okay, so what?
Well, the great thing is, what I hear in my head is Chris Bauer saying, the most power this body has is when they choose to zonie or allow the uses of zoning. So it's good to question and consider and debate it. In the end, we're going to probably have to bring something to you in some form or fashion that you guys will vote on. And you know how that process works. You can't vote down here.
Yeah, well, just put them both on the agenda, and we'll, we'll approve one of them or we won't. I mean, I think we just wrap R7 up in C3, and it's the simplest, cleanest, it's the most easily understood, it's not adding any additional burden for somebody who wants to do something, and yeah, some neighbors are not going to have a say, but I'm not sure neighbors always need to say anyway. I mean, you know, I've got a, I have a transitional...
Not going to be up to me to take that away from them.
Well, but it is. I mean, that, well, that's, that's what we do.
No, it's not.
Sometimes it is. We are preserving the property right of the C3 owner.
Them and all the property owners around them, not just the one.
Well, but at some point, David, it's the basis, we decide how much difference we're willing to give neighbors on what their property owners, or what they're, you know, what they do.
I'm just bringing back Gerald. Both sides, it'll figure it out.
We'll bring it, you guys will decide, as always.
And it's one line, and, you know, you can either not do it, it's not a big deal to add it here or add it there. But I will, I will, we will notice, and we will put it together.
And the only other thing I'd add is that I would worry that if we do do that and add that into the use, we start making a list of things that get used by review in C3, then when I got somebody who comes to me and says, hey, they went and built a hotel next door to me, and I didn't have any say over it, and these folks got all this input on this boarding house, well, why don't, why isn't a hotel on used by review, too? And all of a sudden, we have people coming to us every time they're pissed off that their neighbors did something, and saying, hey, let's add that to used by review. And we could theoretically add this whole laundry list, I'm just not sure we want to open that can of worms for, for a boarding house. I mean, the, the other used by review examples are adult entertainment and big warehouses, and a boarding house just, it seems to fit in with the list of the other stuff rather than the strip club.
Is there any other considerations or thoughts that any of you would like to have, or what do we bring back, two versions or three versions?
Less versions. Or bring, I'll bring two.
Yeah, we don't need, we don't need to stay the same.
He seems petty to me.
Okay.
Just put one agenda item on with alternative language, you know, whatever.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good. Ready for the...
Ready for the next one?
Anyone else? All right. Item number five, discuss truck routes. Leave that to you, Gerald.
Yeah, let me, let me kick off the truck routes conversation. First of all, I'll say that I've been city manager for four and a half years. I've worked for the city for 14. And this truck route ordinance that is currently in place has been the same one that's been in place for about 10 years or so. Nothing's changed that I'm aware of anytime soon. However, what has changed is, is there's been some concerns and complaints that I've heard this year, and I know, Mr. Stallings, you had talked to me too because you've heard some concerns as well. I think we have some people here tonight, mayor, that may want to speak too, and I think we should hear from. But this kind of gives you the base information for the truck route stuff. I appreciate Jackie putting this together for me. This is the truck route map, and we may not have this in a good place on the website. It is on the website. If you go up to the top and click on maps, you'll see a whole bunch of maps that are available. This is one of them, the PDF version. So this is where this comes from, and I think we recently put out some info and we may try to make it more accessible to people. Because occasionally, and I should say occasionally from time to time, we do get complaints from trucking companies about the truck routes. What I'm specifically talking about is the concern about the truck route from farmers, which, you know, agriculture is a valid and a very necessary part of the economy here. So we're very sensitive to that too. But these are the current truck routes. They simply follow, for the most part, major highways. You can see 412 and 81 with a few exceptions here, and I think crossing here. One of the concerns I know that we've had is that, that's generate, well, first of all, the chief will speak in a moment. We get complaints both ways. We get complaints from folks not able, from truckers not able to use the truck route, whether they're farmers or not, and we get complaints from citizens about wire trucks on a road other than the truck route. The reason that we have a truck route and the reason that we set this up about 10 years ago was for several reasons. One was because certain roads are built better to handle the heavy truck traffic. Commercial truck, hauling anything weighs 80,000 pounds or something like that. Chief, you can weigh in more on, on that in a minute. Obviously, the highways are built better to withstand that. So that was one concern. Congestion is always going to be another concern, but we're going to have congestion whether it's on the truck route, the highway, or not. I did hear an interesting comment about, well, just build a bypass. That's from some of my Facebook friends out there. I didn't respond, but if we just had the money to build a bypass, we'd probably fix a lot of the roads we have before we built a bypass, because I bet you if we ask the business people in town, they don't want traffic going around the city. They want to come into the business. So anyway, here are some exceptions because I want to make sure the public and everybody understood that the ordinance that we're following, I think we just put a snippet of the exceptions up here, but we don't, if, if a truck's required to go there for some reason, obviously, they have to get off the truck route at some point. Buses, military, transit, road construction, utility, any kind of farm vehicle that's less than 30 feet, or 30 feet or less in length, that's not what we're talking about, I think. We're talking about 18-wheelers, whether it's hauling wheat or it's hauling petroleum products or whatever it's hauling. And then whatever this is, sport utility vehicles, obviously, we don't stop any of that stuff. So that's what we're talking about, semis. We're not talking about trucks like this, 30 feet and less. So that's what I wanted to bring in and start the discussion and study session. Commissioner, did you want to say anything or speak directly?
Well, I would just say that I was approached by Mr. Hampton, and he, he gave me a call and he was concerned and, and his, I'll introduce him in a second, but Joe Hampton represents the heat, the wheat industry. He's, and he can give you all the details about it, but people in the wheat industry, as you know, during harvest, it's a, a two-week, two and a half week period that there is intense traffic coming into Enid to grain facilities, and it's an important part of our economy. And there was some trucks that weren't on the truck route, and, and Joe had some concern about that. So Joe, why don't you come up and give us a, a presentation on, on, and...
Okay.
Joe Kent here, so he'll do all the talking.
I'm Joe Neil Hampton. I'm president of Oklahoma Grain and Feed Association, used to be general manager of the old Enid Board of Trade, coming upon 48 years. I appreciate the opportunity we have here to discuss this issue today. I'll tell you what, where the big problem is. Where's the bridge, the overpass? That's, that is the problem. That scares, scares me to drive over in my pickup and really scares the people hauling grain to go over that thing. And it's looked like to me it's going to be a while before that's going to get fixed. So what they were probably doing is looking for a way not to have to drive over North Van Buren overpass. And wheat harvest, like you said, it, Rob said, it's, but Scott, maybe 10 days. So Scott Keller, he's the general manager of ADM Grain here in Enid, the Old Enid Equity Equity.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
First, I apologize for your ass. I was not scheduled to be here today. So again, Scott Keller, regional manager for ADM Grain, served on Joe's board for the Oklahoma Grain and Feed. So this is not on behalf of ADM, not one bit at all. We've had a lot of concerned customers of ours with the truck routes. And you know, like, we presented earlier with a 30-foot truck, that's not how a lot of our customers, not any of our customers anymore these days, they don't haul with a tandem. And, you know, they have semis, they need to get grain to market efficiently now more so than ever, especially in this wheat harvest where you're delayed with rains and everything else. So we've had a lot of calls on our side. I appreciate you guys letting us come talk here just to express that concern, especially moving forward here through, throughout the years. This grain market's tight. These guys have to go to the best value. If any of you in here own land, you know how tight this grain market is today. So we want to present an opportunity for every producer around this area. And our customer base, probably about 550 people throughout Enid, a lot of those landlords, producers alike, and they're concerned on it as well, and because they have to go to the best value with how tight things are. The grain market hasn't changed, and like I said earlier, these guys are hauling the semis today more so than ever. They're not hauling with tandems, and they, they need to be able to get it to town. The truck routes that, I mean, the main places we have, we struggle with and we get concerns and calls on from our customer base, and I'm not talking just from ours, CGBs alike, anyone down here downtown is Willow coming in from northwest, and then individuals coming down from the south through South Gate. And when this route came out, especially this map that was put on the, the website, which I saw on there, it was the latest news, one of the top things, is South Gate, because that South Gate coming up to 30th, there's, you know, a lot of our customers travel that as well. So we want to work with you guys as much as we possibly can. We've invested a lot of money in this town, especially with the mill and also our grain side. We employ a lot of people, and we want to work with you guys as best as we can, whether that's information before harvest starts, where you guys know when trucks are going to start picking up throughout town so we can, you know, safety is a huge thing with ours at ADM as well. So we want to make sure you guys are aware as possible, so.
What do you, you guys have a specific request or specific chunk that we should consider adding if the road bed will support the additional traffic?
If the road bed will support the additional traffic, Willow from the west is, I mean, that is a route, and that's, a lot of that's drawn from the timely, you know how much time it takes to get down 412 and up 81 to come east. So Willow is one that a lot of our customers would like to use, and then South Gate coming around so you avoid that traffic coming to the northeast.
So are they, are they wanting to come up off 412 and head north on Wheat Ridge up to Willow and cut over?
Garland.
Or?
A lot of...
Garland.
Garland.
Okay.
So, and if they're coming from the south, they take Garland, but a lot of our customers, you know, are coming up to go to northwest and they'll take country roads to Willow and then come on in.
Gotcha.
So. I, I think, like Scott said, the, the days of, before you saw the old red two-ton Chevy truck are gone. Every, every custom harvester has a semi. That's the way that grain is going to come to Enid, it's going to come in. I'll bet you don't dump...
Maybe one or two.
Yeah, Bob tells. So that, those are gone. Those days are gone. You know, we, like, when I first started, you had a 14-foot combine, you had a truck to haul 250 bushels. Today, it's combines, they have 35, 40-foot headers, and they all have semis. So we, you know, thankfully, we finally got harvest over, but maybe before next year we can sit down and, and see, talk about what we can do so everybody will be on the, on the same page and we're not going to build a harvest and I got to, got to call, have to call Rob, say, what's going on? I've never, we've never had this before. So we want to work with you, very much so, and to see, keep everybody safe. And yet, that's this wheat farmer who, you know, he, he puts it to the ground September, and he prays he doesn't have drought, he prays he doesn't have flood, and he prays he doesn't have hail, he doesn't have trade wars, and he, and he has a good market price. So a lot of those this year, you know, so anyway, we're not talking about a very long period, but 10 days, two weeks max. That's, and rest of the time, the, the, the commercial guys don't want the truck route is. And the ones that don't are the custom cutters that come in from North Dakota and Minnesota and Canada, and, and yeah, I'll plug on the website, but I'll bet you, I'm ready to have them checked. So, but we need to, we know, next year, before harvest, what we'll do, work with Scott and work with the folks at CGB, and so we're all on the same page, everybody knows kind of what the game plan will be. But thank you very much for the opportunity.
Can I ask a question? Out there where you were talking about, Ben, that Garland and Willow, will that road bed support tractor trailer, 80, 90,000 pounds back and forth, over and over and over?
I don't know the answer to that. It sounds like an engineering question. They'd probably have to have time to...
It'd be my guess, no.
It'd be a hard turn.
And so that would be the difficulty in trying to extend it just on Willow, but even if the new portion of Willow from Cleveland to Oakwood could do it, and the old portion, which is showing its age, if you, the roads getting there, well, I'm pretty certain are built to handle.
Yeah.
So that'll be our challenge, trying to figure out, which is why we have had this, this map for a while.
So I, as most of you know, I happen to be married into a family that has a couple trucks, and they, I, I called and talked to them a little bit, and they looked at that map and suggested, just suggested that all that traffic coming in from the west going east, come in on 412, go all the way down to 30th, that's a good road up, and turn back and it only takes you about a mile out of the way.
Yeah, that's not the, go ahead, sorry.
Well, I mean, it, it would also keep you off of that big overpass.
Yeah.
And, I mean, it seems like that would make a lot of sense to do that. I know you've got to go through downtown or through Enid on 412, which is incredibly busy. I do, I do understand that, but...
And lots of lights.
Well, we're working on that. We're not getting those worked.
But the other thing is too, is to get these guys back to the farm, get back to that field as quickly and as efficient as possible, you know? It's going to take them an extra probably 20, 25 minutes, as we all know, going down 412 to get into that northeast side of, you know, Willow and 30th basically.
Yeah, that's where the grain elevators are now. The, the only other two that are still operation got frac sand. So ADM Grain, the mill, and still Johnson CGV are the only two left that are taking grain. They're taking a lot of grain, and they have to all be on 30th Willow.
Well, I mean, I feel like it makes sense to at least look at the, the road bed, but when we have, I mean, even a couple weeks of heavy traffic can really tear the hell out of the road, and when we've had, I mean, just when we've had to rebuild an intersection, I can't remember which intersection it was, it was a year or two ago, that it had very briefly some road, heavy truck traffic, and I think it was, I can't remember what Gdansky said, but it was something about the force from stop turning of those front wheels turning and then going off, just it's the amount of damage that can happen really quickly and how expensive it is to go replace the intersection work. And if we can, if we have roads that can support it, then it kind of makes, you know, having great harboring, but even a couple weeks on roads that won't support it can cost us a boatload of money.
I think we're looking into just to see...
Yeah, it doesn't hurt to look. What's with this chunk of South Gate that's half a mile on?
I don't know. That's, that's a county road.
Okay.
So that's outside the city limits, so we don't...
So they pay the taxes anyway, who cares? You can go all the way you want in South Gate.
But I can tell by, I mean, we probably should have a county commissioner.
Now, if you want to take your, like, your own hands, you go down thousands.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. By, by looking at it, it's not a, it's, at least parts of it don't appear to be built to handle heavy truck traffic.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for the opportunity, ladies and gentlemen. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Chief, come on up because I neglected you, you, I want to say, I want to say something for the chief, on the chief's behalf.
It's all his fault.
What the chief and police do is simply enforce the law and enforce the code. So that's probably what he's going to say.
I'm done. The, the only dog in the fight that we have on this is enforcement. We enforce the truck route that the commissioners put together back about eight, nine years ago. Now, the issues that we have with trucks in this town is not just harvest, but it's sandbox trucks, cattle haulers, pig haulers. Go out on standby garriot and you're going to get 10, 15 trucks every 10 minutes. So there is some issues with that. Some of the trucks that are coming back, you know, cutting down Garland, cutting down Oakwood, those roads aren't really built for that, I'm going to guess. And I used to, and Joe Neil knows, I used to work harvest years ago, back in the 80s, when trucks were all the way down Willow, stuck at Van Buren, and I was dumping trucks, and they'd come in 120,000 pounds or more, and it was ruining Willow at the time, and it was just nothing but divots. So to put a truck on a, on a road that's not rated is going to be an issue, whether it be a sandbox truck, whether it be a 100,000-pound wheat truck or whatever. So that's damage that could be caused that y'all are going to have to fix. I mean, because the roads are going to be tore up. Some of the dirt roads, I don't know bridges, but I think there's some old WPA bridges probably still out there that are only rated about five tons. So, you know, if, if one of those goes down the city limits, then that's on, that's on you all to fix. So, you know, we are, in the last, I do have some stats, just since April 1st, we've written 20 citations for truck route, just not here recently, but since April, and 30 warnings. So, and that's just not wheat trucks. In the month of June, which might have been wheat trucks, we've done about eight citations and about 15, 18 warnings. So, you know, it, it, it just depends on what you all want to do. If you want to change the truck route, then change it. I mean, we'll enforce whatever. You know, I'd be careful about selective enforcement. Selective enforcement is no good deed, and, you know, if we didn't do some trucks, then we're going to have sandbox trucks, frac trucks, haulers, the windmill blades coming through, they're going to be saying, why? Why, why, why can't we go this way? I get it on the North Van Buren overpass, it scares me going over the car. So, but there are alternate routes around it. I don't know if Willow, you know, West Willow from Oakwood is, is probably substantial enough. I don't know. But, you know, it's the damages that can be caused. I'll enforce whatever you all want, and as it stands, we're going to enforce this. Any questions? It's a, it's a conundrum, that's for sure. So. Dave? Alrighty then.
What, what are we looking at on, this is not from the chief, on the overpass? Are we looking at maybe one or two more harvests?
I, I think it probably won't be complete by next year. One side will be complete.
One side will be completely rebuilt relative to shortly. The other side is going to be close.
So one more harvest, I think. Surely it shouldn't be two. And we are working on traffic synchronization. That's something else Michael's been tasked with. Michael, all your objectives are out in the open now, so.
No kidding.
Hey, I, I see that Alan Brooks stepped in. Hi, Alan. There was a question early on, Commissioner Mason, I don't think he's met you yet. Alan Brooks, our partner from Public Law Finance Group, has a long history with his company, working with the city, and he's going to talk to us upstairs, but we, you know, we still have some time if you want to ask anything down here.
No, I was just wanting to make sure what the agreement was. I'm, so, no, I'm fine, and I'll wait on the presentation. I think I probably already said enough tonight.
Yeah, the fee agreement is, I think, a half percent. Yeah, the fee agreement is, I think, a half percent.
Did you, did you already give kind of a high level overview?
Actually, I didn't get into the agreement. I kinda talked about the history, but do you wanna give the high level overview and talk about the agreement?
When John's not here, you, when John Wolf is in your financial advisor, you can say, John, glad you were late.
He'll give us a point off his fee, right?
You, you wanna, you wanna come up to the microphone and?
So I don't have any numbers in front of me, but I can talk, again, kinda high level with everybody. Uh, what we're talking about this evening is refinancing a portion of the Clean Water SRF loan that refinanced the wastewater treatment plant. Working from memory, I think that was a series two thousand and ten issue, uh, about the, the, there's, there's two things we're trying to accomplish in this process. One, uh, of that transaction, in round numbers, about forty-five percent of that loan came out of Oakland Water Resources Board bond proceeds. When we have proceeds from the water board's bonds that are tax exempt, that we have to make sure that we don't enter into any, any agreements that would impact the tax exemption on that transaction. If we refinance those dollars, that forty-five percent, uh, from, with the water board and we utilize cash that the water board has versus bond proceeds, then we're not subject to those same restrictions in terms of, uh, as an example, private activity limitations relative to the wastewater treatment plant. That would provide us some flexibility in entering into potentially agreements to sell effluent from wastewater plant that wouldn't, again, tie our hands with federal tax rules. So we have met with staff at the Oakland Water Resources Board, discussed with them the flexibility that could be obtained by refinancing, uh, a, a component, uh, of the transaction, about ten point seven, ten point seven five million dollars, I believe, in rough numbers. Um, the added advantage is that the transaction, if we refinanced it based on rates today, it would drop the interest rate from about, uh, two point eight one percent, which was the rate when we closed. That's the all-in rate, including the administrative fee, to about one point seven six percent all-in rate, including administrative fee. So, uh, transaction costs are in round numbers, slightly over one percent. The fees are for our farmer, half percent of the principal amount, same with municipal finance services. I think we each had twenty-five hundred expenses and a trustee bank acceptance fee. So let's, let's, let's call it that in a nutshell. Gross savings, if we, based on rates today, would be about seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars over life of the transaction. After transaction costs, it would save the city, again, round numbers, about six hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, the rate wouldn't be set until after the water board, well, one, until this body approved it, until the Oakland Water Resources Board considered it by their board, which would happen at their August meeting. But the rate would be set at that time. I mean, I mean, theory is if you could refinance tax exempt debt with taxable debt and get the same rate, I mean, that'd be great. We would, we'd have the flexibility to do what we needed to do and we wouldn't have the, uh, encumbrances of federal tax law.